All right, we're still back in our open session. We will start with a department update from Public Works Director Jeff Hunter in County Engineering. Hold up. Ready, gentlemen? And you might wait a second for... We will. See how it changed. That was a...
Well, even...
Hmm. I don't do those.
Well, I know. Look here.
Looking.
You weren't the only one.
Oh, I know. Okay, I guess we'll get started. We have a few things. First, we have a couple bid openings today on some Fed Aid projects. One's a plastic white line, white edge line, and the other one's slope flattening and guardrail. And we have a few things on your consent agenda. More contracts. We have a small works contract with West Coast Soil Solutions for pulverizing Bickleton Highway in town and that piece, but that's happening at, right after the, right after the rodeo. If we did it before the rodeo, we'd all be finding new places to live. We also have a small works contract with JNS Enterprises. This is the last portion of our waterline project, and this is to put the grass back in for the fairgrounds. Then we also have a small works contract with DBK. This is to start the insulation for the HVAC systems here. And with that, we'll turn it over to scroll to talk a little bit about construction and design.
So as we speak, asphalt's being laid on Courtney Road, and they're working on the last bit of guardrail. Last week, I think Jeff's actually gave you pictures. Last week, the failing section of asphalt on Roosevelt Grade Road was removed, replaced with new asphalt by the contractor.
Yeah, I cover a little bit more, elaborate a little bit more on that. I gave you pictures to show you. It was a failed section. It took, it was two years in the making, back and forth. We had to prove our point. They did get, because it's a lot of money. It wasn't cheap for them to come out and do this, but they did it. I want to thank the prosecuting attorney's office for all the help they provided with letters and everything else. It was, we put down the first lift of asphalt in 2021. 2023, we put down the final lift of asphalt. So, but that project is now complete.
What do you estimate their cost for redoing that was?
Probably $250 to $300 grand.
What was the original contract, two and a half or four?
Two and a half, about, what was it, three million?
I think it was three.
Yeah, three, three and a half million. Okay.
Okay, and contract documents have been sent to the low bidder that we awarded the Rock Creek Old Age Bridge project to, so we'll wait for those comebacks, then get started. Also, some of our construction staff has begun the annual traffic counts, and they're currently working on collecting that data on the west side of the county. On the design end of things, we've got those two bid openings this afternoon. We've already received bids for each of them as well, so we got some interest there. Still waiting on our permission to go to add for the last safety project, which is the curb warning signs and guidepost. Washdott is still reviewing it supposedly. The data collection project, the one proposal we received with our RFP is being evaluated and working through the award procedures that Washdott has set forth for that. The Bickleton Highway paving project, this is the federally funded overlay project which goes through town, East Road and Roosevelt, the last piece of Roosevelt Grade Road, is in the design stages now that we have funding approved and environmental documentation is being prepared. The design work continues with Sunday, Sundale High and Old Highway Eight, right-of-way documents are being finalized, as well as stormwater, and we're still waiting for concurrence from DAP for the archaeological report that we submitted. That's about it.
Okay. Did Commissioner Christopher have a question?
Annual traffic counts. Normally, on my road, those are at the bottom of the hill and they were up 500 yards kind of thing. Do you normally keep those in the same spot or try to?
Yes.
Because this was in a different spot, so then I got questioned by a neighbor, and I told him that it was over, but I was kind of curious why it moved.
I don't know. We'll have to look into that. That's a good question. They should be in the same location. They're required, and then we submit that information.
This location makes sense to me because it was, I don't know if you're familiar with my road, but it's always been at the very bottom of the hill, almost right before you hit the stop sign to turn right. And so you know everybody's slowing down because they're going to turn right, and now it's actually kind of halfway up the hill, so you can actually tell how fast people are going through there. But...
If that was the location, last year, we did a study of that intersection that had the counter set in a different location. Is that maybe where they, where you remember him being sat?
Yeah, well, it was, it always has been down the bottom, down the creek, and it's never made sense to me. So this time, it was up in front of the neighbor's driveway, you might say, and so he was questioning it, but it actually makes more sense where it's at. I just didn't know why it was moving.
We'll follow up on that. I did, might have changed, I mean, we have different, we have different people doing it every year, but we have one person that typically shows because we usually hire interns. This year, we didn't hire interns. We're using our survey crew to do it. So they may have did a little bit of extra thinking. I don't know.
You might find some different data this year.
Yeah, we could have, which we don't want to do that. Yes. Okay, on the maintenance end, east end, the east side, they're doing shoulders and culverts on East Road, preparing for that paving project. We're doing grading and we're patching for the Bickleton Highway event. Not in the areas we're grinding, but other areas. West side, we're patching roads in Housam, and we'll patch roads towards the end of the weekend, Benjen, in preparation of the paging paving project that we're doing for the city of Benjen. We're grading still in Appleton. Appleton's kind of a loose term. It's a lot of that whole area up there. On the facility side, we will, the contract for the curbs will be awarded next week to pour in the curb on front of Annex One. And insulation contract will be awarded, was awarded this week and will be awarded this week, and the HVAC repair contract should be awarded next week or should be brought before you guys do award. When I talk about that, we're only doing the curb piece. Our crews are pouring the sidewalks, but we did find somebody to pour the curb. I don't have a curb machine, and the city wouldn't be very happy if it wasn't real straight. Let's see, the only thing different here, we're going to pass through Pioneer Centers, the same jail, same dispatch. HVAC's been complete. We're scheduling the flooring, and that will complete that project. Fairgrounds events, we have a graduation party this weekend in the exhibit building. We usually have an event every weekend lately, which is good. Juvenile, their move, we've have, we started moving them yesterday. We will finish moving them today. They will be fully operational in their new offices come tomorrow. They got the same shock we did from Annex Four. Annex Four, if you've been in, have very big offices. The offices in the courthouse are about the same size as the offices here, so when you go there, you're like, crap, all my stuff doesn't fit. Now I got to downsize a little bit, so they're finding that. And speaking of Annex Floor, our four, the flooring is on order, and the temp, some of the temp walls will be removed. Some of them are getting, are be permanent. We've been working with Aaron for what that facility will look like. Fuel Island preliminary plans are scheduled to be back to us next week for review. Radio Tower, I will still schedule to start, and the 26th of this month, we finished the new locking system at the gate last week, so we no longer will be locked in or locked out. When you have that many people operating a gate, you end up with, people can't figure out how to daisy chain locks together. So we put in what they call a piano key lock system. You've been on the warehouser gates or some of the gates here. That way, one person has one lock, and you can't lock anybody else out. And some follow-up issues, we gave FERC comments yesterday on, just to ensure, they had picked up a lot of the stuff we'd given in the draft, EIS, their stuff, they had listed some of the stuff. I just want to ensure that we didn't somehow get dropped out and that we have the Byerland Bridge that we're concerned with and Hockda Road, but I think they'll be, so far, I don't see any reason why they won't be good partners. And we're working with Jeff King to do something with the fencing at Flat Top. I don't know what he has for a budget. He would like to get it permanently fixed, but that's going to be much more expensive. So we'll look at different options, but right now, 12-foot fence is $50 a foot, not installed. That's just the cost of the material. So, but we're looking at different options, and I think that's all we have.
Questions from my segments?
How's it going down there on Courtney?
Oh, yeah. No, 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 no. We have, we have a couple inspectors that are keeping a close eye. So far, the reports we've got is it's, it's different crew. They have some people from other companies helping them, and so far, the first lift is gone. Good. They couldn't even take off last time. It was a mess.
They've only got two trucks unloaded from what I heard.
Yeah, they haven't got that far. We're not really worried about their production. I mean, it'd be nice to get it done, but we don't pay for their production, so I just assume they, even if they get 200 tons a day, as long as it's good, that's all I care about. I only want to do this once.
Do we have a testament of ownership either?
Yeah, they're going to pave this week, and the goal is, is to get up that first, you know, the first piece that was paved. That's the key, because after that, things will, get the first lift, and then they have another project they're going to pull out, and then they're going to come back. They have enough working days, they can do that, but the general has told them, I don't care, you're not pulling out until you get that first piece paved, because I'm not going to keep grading that road. Because, you know, he's stuck grading almost daily now, and that, that, again, that's not an expense we pay for. That's the county.
Well, we pay.
Yeah, he didn't expect it to go like this, though.
That's all we have.
Okay. Thank you.
Good work.
Good morning, sir.
Howdy, sir. Thank you, thank you.
Decision of which one you want.
We've got the good 10 pounds of paper today.
Just confuse us.
Yes, we'll do the dryer.
I'll see, maybe. I'll see what I can do.
Sure.
All righty, 10:15, we are moving on to elected official report update. We have an update from Sheriff Bob Song.
All righty. Whoa. It's working. First item, there were a total of 4,963 calls for service since January 1st of this year to June 5th. In addition to the calls for service, deputies served a total of 432 civil papers during that same time period. Item two, on May 2nd, 2023, at 7:00 PM, we conducted the West End Posse meeting in White Salmon. We provided training and talked about various community events coming up throughout the county, in which we will be requesting volunteer posse members to assist in these various events. Item three, May 5th and May 6th, 2023, we had our sheriff's booth at the Home and Garden Event held at the Clickedat County Fairgrounds. The event was a great success. We had numerous people stopping at the sheriff's booth. Chief Civil Deputy Karen Ings did an outstanding job, along with other deputies, in greeting the public and answering their questions. Item four, press release, on May 6th, 2023, at approximately 6:43 PM, dispatch advised deputies of a motor vehicle collision with a possible fatality approximately five miles on Highway, on Glenwood Highway from Highway 142. Deputy Chancellor Rue and Dwayne Matulovich responded to the accident. Washington State Troopers also responded to assist deputies with the accident. It was determined to be a one-vehicle collision with one fatality. The deceased individual was identified to be Corey Don Lee, age 24, from Richfield, Washington. Please refer to the attached press releases for further detail. Press release, on May 10th, 2023, at approximately 12:43 PM, Clickedat County 911 Dispatch Center received a phone call from an unidentified male subject. The male subject told dispatch that he is outside of Columbia High School and is going to kill everyone he could because of Satan. Dispatch immediately dispatched Clickedat County deputies to the possible active shooter call at the school. Numerous other law enforcement agencies, fire department, medics also responded to assist. Numerous law enforcement officers made a complete search of the school grounds and all of the school buildings. No suspect shooter was found or located. It was also determined that no one had heard any gunshots fired at all during this episode. It was further determined that active shooter call was a false alarm. We have learned that the active shooter false calls at schools have been occurring throughout the state of Washington and other states. I want to thank the following agencies for their outstanding help with the possible active shooter call at the Columbia High School in White Salmon. Clickedat County Sheriff's deputies, Clickedat County Department of Emergency Management, Washington State Patrol Sergeant and Troopers, Benjen White Salmon Police Department, Washington State Wildlife Department, Columbia River Intertribe Fisheries Enforcement, White Salmon Fire Department, Clickedat County Emergency Services, White Salmon Medics, Fire District Three, and the Benjen Fire Department. Also want to thank the Columbia School Administrators for their outstanding cooperation. This active shooter incident, thank God it turned out to be a false call, but it was excellent training for all of us to, our shortcomings and what we can do better, and working with all of these agencies I just mentioned. And we were very blessed to have that kind of response if it had been the real thing. Item six, press release, domestic disturbance in Golden Dale on May 16th, 2023, at approximately 7:30 PM. Clickedat County Sheriff was dispatched by Clickedat County 911 Dispatch to a domestic disturbance at 24 Bames Way in Golden Dale, Washington. Clickedat County Sheriff's Office and Washington State Patrol responded to the address provided. Clickedat County Sheriff's Joe, Sergeant Joe Riggers arrived at the intersection of Baines and Holby Road, where he was met by two residents from the 24 Banes Way address. The residents reported that A.J. Campo, C-A-M-P-O, was at the residence firing rounds and had a machete. While Sergeant Riggers was questioning the two individuals, two additional residents were able to flee and meet with Sergeant Riggers. Clickedat County Sheriff's, Clickedat County, sorry, Search and Rescue Director Jeff King activated the small unmanned aerial drone. Coordinator and pilot Fred Huey and the others operated the drone to monitor the residence area and property around it for the suspect. KCSO deputies and Washington State Patrol Troopers quickly surrounded and secured the scene, and the Tri-City Regional SWAT team was called and arrived on the scene several hours later. The Clickedat County Sheriff's Office obtained an initial search warrant. The Tri-City Original SWAT team entered the property, where they found the alleged suspect, A.J. Campo, and took him into custody without incident. A.J. Campo was booked on three counts of assault with first degree, seven counts of a felon in unlawful possession of a firearm, first degree, two counts of possession of a stolen firearm, and one count of malicious mischief in the second degree. The Clickedat County Prosecutor's Office filed three counts of assault first degree, one count of assault second degree, one count of unlawful possession of firearm in the first degree. On May 18th, Mr. A.J. Campbell had his first Superior Court appearance. Judge Randy Crook set bail for $250,000. Arrangement is set for June 5th, 2023, at 9:00 AM. The Under Sheriff Carmen Knopf and I want to thank the Clickedat County SUAS team, which is the drone operators, the county 911 dispatch, dispatchers, the Washington State Patrol Rule Seven Fire and Rescue, Clickedat County EMS, Golden Dale Police Department, and the members of the Clickedat County Sheriff's Office. Please refer to the attached press release. Item seven, press release, inmate death. On May 20th, 23, 2023, just before 2:30 PM, correction deputies found an unresponsive male during a routine cell check. Corrections deputies began life-saving measures until the arrival of Clickedat County EMS. The male was transported to Clickedat Valley Health and further transported by lifeline. Tragically, he later died while in the hospital. Currently, the Skamania County Sheriff's Office is conducting an independent investigation. We are deeply saddened by the loss and extend, and extend our condolences to the family. And you can see the press release for further details. Item eight, on May 12th, 2023, Deputy Dwayne Matulovich made contact with me at KCSO and handed in his resignation. Dwayne informed me that he is looking for a change, something different from law enforcement. Dwayne stated that he has job opportunity to go to work for the railroad. Dwayne has been an asset and a credit to the Clickedat County Sheriff's Office and the citizens of Clickedat County. Dwayne's resignation is effective on August 2nd, 2023. However, his last day of work will be June 3rd, 2023. He will be using his comp time and vacation time until effective resignation date of August 2nd, 2023. We wish Dwayne the best in his new job. Please refer to Under Sheriff Carmen Knopf's report on patrol activities and, and please refer to also, they'll take their turn here, Chief Jail Deputy Lauren Coop report on jail activities, and Karen, Chief Civil Deputy, on her report on budget and so forth. Any questions?
No. Very detailed, thank you.
A lot of press releases.
Been a busy.
Good morning. I guess it's still morning. The Clickedat County Sheriff's Office is gearing up for summer. With the onset of summer, we anticipate that the number of calls will only continue to increase. Number of tourists visiting Clickedat County is evident as campgrounds, lakes, and treloids are all full, especially on the weekends. The increase in tourist activities will also mean that we will have an increase in search and rescue calls and marine calls. I looked at our call just from April to May, and so far, we've increased about 125 calls in one month, so they are rising substantially. The Sheriff's Office Marine Unit will be in the Columbia River in their newly acquired Osprey, and Karen will give an update how we acquired them. Deputy Wells and other marine deputies have had the opportunity to take the boat out on windy, high swell days on the river. They were pleased that the boat handled so well and the waves and the swells that they couldn't be out in the past. This new boat will allow our marine deputies to respond to calls on the river when safe weather and water conditions are unfavorable. The other boat just couldn't take those big, heavy swells and waves, and it would just crash and, you know, do things that you don't want to do in a boat. So this, this new one has like styrofoam along the sides. I've got a picture of it. It's pretty cool. It's 27 feet. Where's Rob? It's 27 feet long. It's pretty big, so it's got a fully enclosed cabin on it, so it'll be really good when all the, we have adverse weather conditions out there as well to protect the deputies from the weather. Recognizing the importance of boat and water safety, Deputy Wells was able to be on the KLCK Weekly Radio Show to promote boating and water safety, and we want to encourage people to use life jackets, follow the rules of the water, and have boats, kayaks, and paddleboards inspected. On May 10th, I attended the Lisle Community Meeting. I was there to talk to the citizens about ways to collaborate with residents to reduce Lisle's criminal activity. Clickedat PUD was also present at the meeting, and I spoke with KPUD Manager Jim Smith about replacing Lisle's streetlights with more efficient and brighter LED lights. This has prompted an additional meeting this week, where we'll be in Lisle looking at the options and available, that are available to the residents. And then I will be back on, in Lisle on June 14th for another community meeting. On May 11th, Sheriff Songer and I attended, were invited to the seventh day of the school on the Bickleton Highway. The students were studying the Constitution, and Sheriff Songer gave each student a pocket-sized copy. The students were excited to talk about everything they'd learned, and I was surprised at how interactive the younger students were. Those kids had 1,000 questions. They knew what the different amendments were. They, they were very interactive, and it was a really good opportunity to meet with the kids.
What age group?
We met with kindergarten on up to high school, so it was a good variety of kids. We talked about being, we talked, discussed sex offenders and how to report unwanted touching, things like that, to make sure that I was, they actually brought it up to talk about, I mean, where to go to get help, relying on teachers and friends and family and stuff. So that, I think it was a really good interaction, and I anticipate that next school year, we'll be invited back. On May 15th, we started National Police Week by gathering at the Administration Building. We had cake and refreshments. Community members, along with law enforcement officers, attended. Women behind the badge were also present and displayed the flags for the event. Mark Sichrenius was there also for that event, and it actually marked the 34th anniversary date that Mark was shot while in the line of duty. So it was really nice to have his presence there and a reminder that we are all affected close to home. From May 22nd through May 25th, I attended the Waspin Conference, along with Chief Coop and Sergeant Gillum. The conference was packed full of presentations and speakers throughout the week. Washington State Patrol gave an update for the new process for firearms transfers. They have yet to staff the department processing the transfers fully and have delayed starting until August. From the information they provided, background checks quickly removed potential applicants, and with only seven of 34 hired, they will quickly be overrun with transfers, and I anticipate a long delay in processing the transfers. He couldn't even give me like a timeframe of when they anticipate, so I asked him if 10 years was inadequate, because if they've only hired seven in the last year, and they're, they just keep throwing applicants out because they can't meet the background qualifications, that's a long process ahead. So I don't, I think that our firearms transfers are going to be delayed significantly. On May 30th, after several months of working out the details, ordering phones, we've successfully moved our cell phone service to FirstNet, and they provided a team to activate the phones, and Shelby from IT was present to update the phones and computers for the deputies. I have to say, I had service between Golden Dale and Topham. It was pretty nice. So FirstNet, FirstNet is also providing a COW, as it's called. It's the movable cellphone tower truck. We've identified the locations for our two events in Glenwood for it to reside. It'll be at the Glenwood Rodeo, and then the second, it will be at the Mud Fest, and this will allow deputies and... He couldn't even give me like a timeframe of when they anticipate, so I asked him if ten years was inadequate, because if they've only hired seven in the last year, and they're, they just keep throwing applicants out because they can't meet the background qualifications, that's a long process ahead. So I don't, I think that our firearms transfers are going to be delayed significantly. On May thirtieth, after several months of working out the details, ordering phones, we've successfully moved our cell phone service to FirstNet, and they provided a team to activate the phones, and Shelby from IT was present to update the phones and computers for the deputies. I have to say, I had service between Goldendale and Toppenish. It was pretty nice. So FirstNet is also providing a COW, as it's called. It's the movable cellphone tower truck. We've identified the locations for our two events in Glenwood for it to reside. It'll be at the Glenwood Rodeo, and then the second, it will be at the Mudfest, and this will allow deputies and will provide a policy member on who's there with a FirstNet phone in case we need for emergencies. We have upcoming events in June, July, and August that will be keeping everyone busy, and we encourage the citizens of Clickatuck County to exercise caution when they're on their highways, waterways, and trails. I've also attached a press release that I'll read. This incident occurred over the weekend. On six-three, two-thousand-and-twenty-three, Clickatuck County Dispatch received a call that a female had fallen out of her kayak and went over the low-head dam on the Clickatuck River near the Glenwood Fish Hatchery. Clickatuck County Sheriff's Deputy Eric Beasley responded and requested that Clickatuck County Search and Rescue and the Glenwood Fire Department be paged to the location. Department Emergency Management Director Jeff King contacted Deputy Beasley and advised he was contacting Wet Planet White Water Company to respond to a Swift Water Rescue Certified Personnel. He also requested dispatch to page out the UAS team. When Deputy Beasley arrived in the area of the reporting, made contact with the Glenwood Fire Department, and they were able to determine the last location of the missing person after making contact with the husband of the missing kayaker. The SAR Canine Team also deployed and searched the riverbanks where the terrain allowed them to go. Rafting kayak teams composed of SAR personnel and members from Wet Planet floated the river from the Fish Hatchery to Lidle Park. Other kayakers had heard about the incident, and they floated the river ahead of the search teams to look for the missing female. Ground teams from Glenwood Fire, SAR, and other local people began searching roads and areas that were accessible by foot. The DEM UAS team flew drones over the river to locate the missing female. The search continued until dark and resumed the following day. On six-four, SAR personnel and the UAS team responded to the scene and continued to search the river and the banks of the Clickatuck River. The search was, the search was suspended approximately one PM when no signs of the missing kayaker. The Clickatuck River is, she's running swiftly at this time of year with a snow runoff, and the steep terrain posed serious safety concerns for the search teams. The missing female was identified as twenty-nine-year-old Sandhya Shridhar. At the time of her disappearance in the Clickatuck River, she was wearing a pink hooded sweatshirt and gray yoga-style hiking pants, and she was not wearing a life jacket when she fell out of her kayak.
Do you have a general location where the residence? I didn't see that on there.
So she was a tourist. Her residence seems to be, sounds like they're from the Seattle area, but maybe have been temporarily residing in Stevenson because of her husband's work, so. It's, it's really a tragic accident that really shows the need to wear, we need to wear life jackets. Could have been very helpful. I also wanted to give you a quick update on, I'd mentioned before about the flock cameras. I had the flock representative out yesterday. They've actually designed a whole mapping of areas we could put flock cameras. I've got to get it in writing of the cost of it, but it's an opportunity that we could work with Goldendale Police Department, Benjin White Salmon Police Department, and some other entities, PUD, for locations of these cameras. And I, I'll have a link I can share with you. They're pretty detailed. They're hoping we could purchase about thirty cameras. We obviously can't purchase thirty right now, but it is something maybe we can phase in over a number of years. But we do have an opportunity to have a two-month program that's free, install and everything, and we'll set the number of cameras up. We just, once I know the numbers of how many cameras, they want a minimum lease. It's not a purchase of a camera, it's a lease. So the cost includes all of the technology, all the maintenance, all of the use of it. The person who set up the mapping system, she is a former detective for Oak Ridge Police Department out of Tennessee, and she does crime analysis. And she explained how their department, they were one of the first ones to have flock, how they utilized it to really cut down on crime, how they used it to go after people with warrants, because they were able to do patterns of the suspect vehicles so that they could get them into a safe location where they could protect their, safety of their officers when they're doing warrant service and things like that. So it is a really good opportunity for us to hopefully reduce some of the criminal activity. There are eight, I think there's eight cameras out on the east end right now that are currently privately owned. The Windmill Company out at milepost ten on Hockter, I know that I talked to them about purchasing some cameras. So it's an opportunity for us all to work together, so hopefully we can come up with something.
You would be put in high-crime-rate areas.
I'd really like to start with Lisle. That's, that's got a huge issue right now.
Does that FBI have anything on Lisle or is it just on the rest section?
Yakima County has some up in Yakima. Benton County has them. They're really starting to work in Oregon now. I know they've got a whole bunch in Medford, so.
I don't know if the state does.
I don't know if the state does, but it is an opportunity for maybe WSP also to be involved, because we know that there's a lot of criminal activity that's running up and down ninety-seven and fourteen, so. Wow.
It's a new day. I'm stopped.
Good morning. Currently in the jail, we have a total of twenty-six inmates in custody, six females and twenty males. One male and one female are currently at Eastern State Hospital receiving treatment. On May seventh, we hosted the Rolling Memorial for Officers at the Courthouse parking lot. The End of Watch Ride Remember Organization brought their Rolling Memorial in. The Goldendale American Legion did a great job with the color guard, the rifle salute, and the playing of taps. And it was a slightly wet and chilly day in the morning, but we had a good turnout with citizens showing their support. And thank you to the commissioners who made it to the memorial event. Very much appreciated. We had an emergency in the jail on the twentieth of May when an inmate hanged himself. Your corrections deputies did a fantastic job performing lifesaving measures and working under the stress of the situation. Although the inmate eventually passed away, I received a phone call that night from the Lifeline Crew telling me to congratulate our team for doing a great job with CPR, because he had a pulse when they arrived at the hospital in Tri-Cities. And I can tell you from firsthand experience that it is extremely stressful and exhausting to actually perform CPR on someone in a real-life situation. And our corrections deputies did everything that they were trained to do to the best of their ability, and I am very proud of them. I've been in contact with the young man's parents many times over the last couple of weeks, and they will be holding a ceremony at the jail this weekend for their son. Last week, as was mentioned, Under Sheriff Knopf and I had a very, oh, this wasn't mentioned earlier, we had a very productive meeting with Tamira and James from Behavioral Health. We're going to be working on the implementation of some very good things in the jail, like a more in-depth mental health screening for people who are brought in and coordinating the transition planning of people that are being released to outside providers. With these and some other things, James and Tamira are a big help, and I'm looking forward to the progress we're going to make for those that are suffering from mental health issues and end up in our county jail. The Washington Sheriff's and Police Chiefs Conference in Spokane, that was mentioned earlier, was great. We attended that, had some classes, a lot of classes there were specific to the jails. I talked with other jail chiefs and made some good contacts, and I've got some invitations to visit other county jails close to us to get more information on the things that they do, things that they've implemented in their jails to operate smoother and safer. Overall, it was a very good conference. Currently, I'm going through our jail policy to make sure it's up to date and fits our facility specifically, and in the not-too-distant future, when I'm done with that, I will be implementing some more training on policy and procedures for our staff so that they're all up to date. Corrections deputies Dylan Layfield and Lance Stevenson graduated from the ten-week Corrections Officers Academy, and they are back to work in the jail. We're very happy to have them both back. Both of them are doing great. We've also got two applicants who are getting close to completing the hiring process. Their psychological exams are this week, and if those go well, we may have two new hires soon. One of them already graduated from the academy, and one of them will need to go to the academy. We will be. Yes. Hallelujah. Yes. Knock on wood.
I'd like to make a note real quick. The meeting with Tamira and James, the updated evaluation forms that he referred to, it's something that we started talking about about a year ago, so we're finally with now the Behavior Health Department, you know, being far more organized now. They were able to come up with some new forums and stuff for us. So now the trick is hopefully to, for now, we'll have to just handwrite or document them through, but we'll have to update our Spelman booking, and that's kind of a complicated process. That way, it all is inclusive in that booking in one, one unit, not separately, but it has been a long time coming.
Do you do that for every person that comes in?
No, everybody gets screened, and we already have assessments. These are just more in-depth, and will give us a better idea of what's going on with the people. So we also have had, he didn't make note of, but she was able to provide, get a, she's a nurse practitioner out of Yakima. She actually come in and evaluated an inmate. She prescribed him medications, and she got us a source for some free medications or reduced-cost medications. So we are making progress, and when we were at WASPIC, we were talking with other agencies. We, as the little redneck podunk jail, are by far in a better situation with our mental health and recognizing the needs and stuff of our inmates than many other jails in the state. So I felt pretty confident that the changes we've been making and working on for the last, I don't know, two years, we're finally maybe at that, that turning point. So we're going to be starting some classes also weekly and sessions in the jail with mental health providers so that they actually get some counseling while they're in there, and they're not just sitting idly. I think that's going to make a huge difference, and it's, it's something I was working on, started a couple of years ago, so.
And now for the fun.
It's, it is fun, because the first words, the budget is on target. Perfect.
So you read my, my highlighted line?
I read it.
And so let's go to the contracts, because I listened to how Erin did her update, and I'm like, oh, I like how she did that, so I'm going to start copying her. So City of Goldendale and City of White Salmon contracts are mimicking the way I did the City of Benjin with the three percent increase. I just have to finish writing it, but doing two and a half people's jobs, it's slow-going because it's, it's just been a backlog of stuff. But we now have McKenna Reed in the records position, so I'm having more time to be able to do that. So you are going to shortly see those two contracts, as well as the Washington Traffic, Washington Sheriff's and Police Chiefs Traffic Safety Grant will be coming to you, and then...
What is that?
WASPIC?
Yeah, what is the Traffic Safety Grant?
That's our annual traffic safety that does speeding, distracted driving. But here's a drumroll for you guys, because I know you like good news. So I got a call before we picked up the boat from the boating program, and they said, hey, let's do our contract for the loan on the boat, so we're going to extend it for a multi-year. So the insurance and maintenance for that boat comes out of the current boating program contract, so again, no cost to the county, and we have this boat, and it is awesome. So you'll be having that contract come through too. Keeping my excitement down. And then, of course, I put sex offenders next. So we are around eighty-six active sex offenders here. We did talk to you guys last month about a fourteen-year-old. He is down Moe County's. He's down in Medford, Oregon, so he is off our list. So, but we will be sending out some verification, so you'll be seeing the deputies doing some knocking on doors and verifying, because even though the offenders come and register in our office, we still have to ensure that that's where they're living. And when they're not where they're supposed to be, then we click a nice little button in the software and the US Marshals do some more knocking. Range Timber Program, I'm also working on those contracts, and we're setting up a meeting so that we've just continuing to move that program ahead. Tom Dewey has been volunteering and doing a great job running around. Anytime anybody calls, he is there, ready to assist, whether it's cattle drives, riding with the timber companies behind their gates, getting a feel for their concerns. And so I think that's working really well. Bob, do you have anything to add on that?
I think we're pretty close to completing his background.
Yeah, Chris Simons, the applicant, has one more step in the process, and then, then we'll be able to move forward on that. Body worn camera program is going well. I kept it the same blurb as last month because we still have to go through and record and update some of the backlog of which cases those films belong to, et cetera, but we are making advances. Our cute little puppy, Profi, had his ACL surgery, and he is ready to be at work, although the doctors say, no, not yet. So he still has to go through his recovery time, but he will be back to ninety to ninety-five percent capabilities. He just, his mind and his heart are ready to work, and he just doesn't realize that sitting and waiting is going to be the best thing for him. He's a malinois. He doesn't, he doesn't take no for an answer very well.
So is he staying in his castle while his handler is...
He's actually staying in his crate, because it's a smaller, smaller location.
The castle has been reconstructed.
It has been repossessed, but not reconstructed. That's too big of a space for him to actually be moving about in, so when...
You gotta tell the dog, hey, slow down for a couple of months, you'll be fine.
Yeah, no, they don't listen to that.
So is he keeping the dog with him while he's on patrol?
At this time, the dog is at home. Yeah, and they keep him medicated when, just slightly medicated when he's in his kennel so that he can not injure himself. But he's doing, he's, he's, he's going to be happy to see all of you. The marine program, we've been out on the water, the deputies. This is the reports of what we've recorded as far as boat inspections. I have not pulled the data on how many hours on the water we've had yet, and I know there's a few more boat inspections. And I know there's a few more boat inspections that they hadn't recorded in the software, so we will meet our goals. And then the posse are starting to sign up for all of the summer programs that we've got. We need 10 posse for each day for the Alderdale Pioneer Picnic this weekend. Then we've got the Glenwood Rodeo, and then we've got Fourth of July. And let me tell you, posse members that are listening, please volunteer, because Fourth of July, we have the demolition derby. And we've got the parade in White Salmon where the Mount Adams Chamber has requested us, and the port.
Has requested you for the parade.
Yes, and we've also been requested for that same day for reserves for the Bingen, Port of Bingen. So we are going to be very busy on the Fourth of July. And then the animal shelter, all the documents have been sent. Kudos to Jeff Hunter and his team for getting everything sent. Now we're just waiting for contracting, and then we'll be able to give you numbers. And we've kept it small. We've kept it inexpensive as far as utilities, et cetera. We're keeping them close to the roads, so it's not expensive as far as digging and, you know. But we'll have the ability to expand at a future time, so. And then we'll turn it over to the Animal Shelter Board for running, but we're waiting for contracting at this time. So that's what I know. Any questions?
Questions?
No.
Very thorough.
Thank you.
I didn't, sorry, I missed opportunity. This summer, we'll be starting a posse scouting program involving kids from 10 to 17. We had a good response at the Home and Garden Show. A lot of parents signed up their kids for that. And we'll be recruiting throughout the next few events. And then we'll do a press release on it and actually get criteria all set up. And I'm excited about it. I think it's going to be a good program for our young folks.
This is specific for those children who are interested possibly in a program or a career in law enforcement to get a feel. Kind of like your Boy Scout program, Girl Scout programs. That's what it's geared for.
Yeah, no, they have those. I grew up with those for both law enforcement and firefighters, so I think it's a good tool to get young kids minds, thinking career path at a young age. So, yeah, good job on that one. Any, anything for these guys?
None here.
No?
Thank you.
Good job, everybody, and thanks for everything you do.
Great day.
Yep, you too, sir. We are running a smidgerly. We can take.
We'll need it.
We'll need it. All right, then we'll start. Go ahead, and we'll next move on to Public Health Director Erin Quinn for Department of.
By that, I hope we won't.
So I provided you with the statistics. I don't know if you had any questions just on those. Quickly, those are for April. I didn't have May's numbers completed. But what I'm seeing with May, especially with environmental health, is that our work by actually double of what last year was. So I think once we get May and June's numbers, that'll be an interesting read and discussion. Any questions about any of the numbers? No? Okay. So environmental health, you all had LeAnn join you, so we are down in environmental health tech, so we're recruiting.
We apologized a little bit.
I'm sure, just a smidge, not really, though. We're excited that she got that opportunity. So we will be recruiting for that position. We have had applicants. They should be doing interviews in the next week or so. And then continuing just with their, with environmental health, just with their workload, they've mostly been pretty busy with doing site evaluations for the last month and a half. Clinically, they're doing some outreach this week. The nurses are going to go out to Roosevelt Field Day at the school, so they're providing vaccines for a couple of children who, whose parents requested that we provide that service. They'll also be taking some Narcan with them for people that are interested there and just promoting just our clinical program, so. We have that going for clinical. For administrative, we do have some contracts pending. There's one for Village Reach today. That's for the after-action report for COVID. It is a grant requirement. We do have the funding for that. We don't really have any options. They've done that for, they've also contracted with a number of other counties. So that's on your consent agenda today. We did have a contract. I talked a couple of times about a home visiting grant. We did not receive that grant. We believe that it was given to another entity in the county. We will support them in their endeavors once we find out who the award was, but we will not be administering that grant, which is, that's fine. And then fiscally, I do need to have a discussion about how we're going to manage debt forgiveness. So we have both the vaccine program and our family planning program have some very specific language about how we forgive debt and when we can and cannot bill for that. I was advised that that either needs to go through you, or we need to have a resolution that allows when the metrics have been met for debt forgiveness, that we can write those off based on criteria so that we just have a blanket approval. So wanting to know if you want to see those numbers on a monthly basis and go that way, or if you would prefer to have a resolution that just allows us that discretion based on the state criteria that we follow.
Need personally resolution.
And we're not, initially, it's going to be a big number. I'll certainly report that out because we have not written our debt off for a number of years. And so the first time, it's not going to be pretty, I'm not going to lie.
How do you, how do you try to collect that, or do you?
We send out a bill. So specifically with the vaccine program, we can only bill one time within a 90-day period, and we specifically, we cannot send to collections. So once we've sent that one bill, that's all we can do.
And there's no collections potential?
I mean, the state guidance specifically states that you cannot send to collections. It's somewhere in my folder, but so, and the, the, the family planning program has very similar language. They will not allow you to take those individuals to collection. So we have, we have to bill with vaccines. We have to bill one time. I think with family planning, I think we get to bill them twice. We actually send a physical bill, and then at that point, we would write it off. But we haven't written it off for a while, so. The first number's going to be scary, but that's not our average, just when that comes up. So I'll get a resolution together and then send that over. I likely will, okay. I'll send that over. Additionally.
Do you run that resolution once you draft it through the prosecutor's office before it sees us?
Yes, absolutely. Because I'd already spoken with them about how to manage the debt forgiveness as well, whether that's just something that we could run off, write off at my discretion or if I needed to go. And so then the choice was just whether you want to have monthly oversight of that or if you want a resolution. So I'll move forward with the resolution then for that. And then just moving through finance stuff, I'd like to get verbal approval to fill our accounting admin three position. That's been vacant since January. We've definitely seen that we need that position. What I, what I see potentially happening with this position, if we get the right skill set, which I'm looking for someone to do billing and coding, we've contracted that out. It's definitely making a difference in what we do, but we feel like we need the in-house, that skill set in-house, and likely would share that position at some point with behavioral health, because as they move into billing, that having that skill set to be able to do that is going to be absolutely necessary to get any sort of return on revenue. And so wanting to get verbal approval to advertise for that position with the intent that eventually it will cover both departments.
Is it a grant-funded position or a county tax dollar-funded position?
I don't have county tax dollars, so grant, yes.
Much of, anyway.
No, I don't have any.
You don't have any of this year?
No, you took it away from me. You all took it away.
I?
Y'all, two years ago. I hold grudges.
You don't need it yet.
I don't need it yet, which is, and I mean, that's fine. So it is within my budget, I guess, is the correct way to say yes. Because we had originally not filled that position, kind of trying to understand if that position was, was something we could reallocate some physician job duties with, and I don't think that that's working out, so. Behavior, any questions for public health? That's my public health.
Now I feel bad now because you made me, said I took away your money, so.
It's fine. We're fine. You know, I'm just.
You're healthy right now. You may not be healthy in the future.
I'm not going to be. I.
Well, we'll have that discussion then.
I know. I'm guessing in about a year. So, and then the, you know, positions like that where we're actually looking at better getting our money, you know, adequately billed is going to be a big thing.
Are you looking to, to continue with the contract biller as well?
If we get someone in-house, we will not know.
I'm assuming if you get somebody in-house, you're going to do bekeeping statistics for a year from now when you do need money on how much money this person brings in by doing billing.
I already have statistics on that. Not well, not in front of me. I'm not going to speak to them, but I, I am good with the statistics. Okay, so behavioral health. So we're working on Annex Four. They were able to paint the front ear, the garage. It made all the difference. It looked like we moved into a brand-new building. It's just absolutely incredible. We picked carpet and flooring next week, so once juveniles moved out, they're going to move forward with putting carpet in the east side of the building. And once that's done, we'll move into the east side, and then they'll carpet the west side of the building. So we're kind of working through that right now.
Are they carpeting the whole thing or only the sections you're using?
We are using the whole thing. So yes to both answers.
That huge building, you're using the whole thing. Interesting, okay.
I mean, not initially, right? Like, I have 12 people. I am not. I am not empire building, but the building's going to look nice. We did, I did get a $50,000 grant as part of a startup funds to put together the front space so that we can do group substance use disorder groups, and that will have hybrids, so they can do telehealth, so people could call into the group meetings. And so that will also help fund the groups. We can't specifically bill some of that to our crisis services. So we have to, so we needed that funding. That will also help, we have a psychiatric nurse practitioner, and I'll talk about that in a second. That will also help her wages until we get our negotiations with the Medicaid organizations done to fund, to fund positions, so. We did, Chris and I did, I don't think I brought a copy, I apologize. Chris and I did a quick what it would look like to stand-up services, July to December, to accommodate medication management, substance use disorder, and an additional therapist that came in for a six-month cost of 1.5 million. That's what we're, let me finish before you have stress. Don't check your blood pressure. Hang on, it's going to get better. It's 1.5 million for July to December. I, I put a lot of money in, like, we don't have desks, right? Like, we don't have phones. We don't have. So there is a lot of funding in there. We did put startup costs in there because, you know, I, I don't, we have to buy pencils, so even though that is an expensive amount.
Would it be in any way therapeutic for these mental health patients to take care of, let's say, dogs?
Yeah. I mean, there's, there is, there is, I think I'm being set up.
Incorporate a dog shelter into the building.
No, we are not running a dog shelter out of that building. It's got brand-new carpet.
I know.
Already said yes.
I'm trying to make my stress go down.
Therapy. So understand that that, that amount, and it's a draft, it's an estimate, so that's definitely staff time, but also includes pencils. And, you know, once you start looking at furniture, that's expensive, so we, we definitely accounted for that. We also just, I got in touch with some folks. One of the, you just had the sheriff's update, so I'm certain they may or may not have spoken about this, but they, they do have to pay for medication for any inmates. As you may or may not know, the psychiatric medication is excessively expensive. Those folks don't have insurance, and so Carmen's, now Lauren's budget pays for that out-of-county budget. They, we were able to get in contact with a corrections sample program, so the drug, the pharmaceutical companies will actually provide those medications to us at no cost. So I worked with them and then Lauren and Carmen, and so we were able to get signed up for that, that medication. We've already gotten two samples at the cost of about 3,000, or savings of about $3,000 if I had purchased that at a local pharmacy. So we are going to continue to look for resources like that that will help the jail that will save them the money, and then obviously their, their folks get the help that they need. So that was really successful. We had a nurse practice psychiatric nurse practitioner offer their time. They came in person. They saw an inmate at the jail who had not been seen for some time and was able to restart them on medication that they hadn't had for, for over a year. And from what I understand, they're doing better, so I'm very grateful that she was able to do that for us. Questions about any of that? I've got, I've got more.
So we're talking about starting July this year, when we were in those.
Ish.
When we were in those discussions with the MCOs, it was, we're looking at 12 months out. How are the MCOs responding to, hey, we're going to jump on this right now?
They are excessive, first, they're excessively supportive, so my hesitation isn't about them being supportive or doing anything they can to help me. They have their money tied up elsewhere, and they are working diligently to get it reallocated to areas where we can utilize that. And I mean, it's going to take time. At some point, they're going to get a contract to us. You know, they have to go through their contracting process. We have to go through ours. And that's part of where I got the $50,000, because we knew that there's going to be a little bit of a gap between when we need to get started and when we actually have those contracts signed for, so.
And with the shutdown of comprehensives in-person up here, that's, that's lit a fire under, I think, is the nicest way to put it.
Yeah, but there's still, I mean, there's still
Because at least in.
Contracts that need to be addressed that have nothing to do with us.
Oh, but, you know, we're working, or the MCOs were working in White Salmon and working with North Shore to bring people up. But we don't have that here in Goldendale, so it's, it's, I think, it's hopefully going to all come together at the right timing, that we can kind of jumpstart that, because like in White Sa, you know, out of the White Salmon side, we're pulling people in from Vancouver. Well, if we were trying to pull people in from Yakima, we'd be pulling, pulling in the people who just left. So there's not the same ability there. So I just, I got to say, we've got to give all the kudos we can to Director Quinn on how much work she's putting into this, and Chris. It's, it's amazing. And the psychiatrist that came down and interviewed, she's willing to keep coming.
Yeah, so that's my next point, but I wanted everybody to get through the 1.5 million before I launched into my next. See, did you have a minute there?
It doesn't.
It's not going to.
Remember to say, but it's not your money, so it'll, it'll help him. Somebody else's money.
Eventually, just like when she loses her public health funding, there will be an ask. If the money ever stops for the behavioral health thing, there will be an ask, and if you don't provide it, you're the boogeyman. So that's the hard part, long-term planning.
Well, and that's why we've been very, I've been attempting with what cards I've been dealt to be very intentional about what piece we add next and knowing that it's going to be covered.
I very much appreciate the way you've gone forward with.
And I can't make any promises that it's going to work out, but I'm trying. So, so we have a psychiatric nurse practitioner, and I, we, she would like to work up to 18 hours a week. She'd like to come to person, in-person. um, she would like to work up to 18 hours a week. She'd like to come to person, in person to Golden Dale to provide medication management services. Spent a lot of conversations over the last week about whether or not they could be a contract employee. Uh, my conversations with the prosecuting attorney's office and HR, um, I don't believe that they can be a contractor. That would make them a casual employee. What we're going to get into trouble, what not trouble, what we're going to be challenged by next is that we're looking at employees who will not fit within the confines of our compensation plan. Um, we have, I'm speaking with a psychiatrist, um, the psychiatric nurse practitioner, um, they, their, their rates are significant. Um, so one, what I would like to do is put, uh, this nurse practitioner as a casual employee. So it'd be a DRS eligible position. We would do their appointment by resolution with their, um, contracted rate that they have requested.
As we, I guess my question is an HR question. We have our grades and steps, which obviously don't go high for some of our directors or some of potential employees. Why don't we just make our grades and steps bigger so that we have more room to maneuver in there? Sorry, I have to come forward to the.
This really blows that away. You need a lot of.
Well, I was gonna say, we're going to move from, uh, one of the top, green 74, and we're going to move to 104, but you know.
I think the short answer is, Commissioner Anderson's right. The position she's talking about, we, we'd have to add a lot of grade levels. But I think the longer answer to that is, the commissioners have talked a lot about doing salary studies every three years or so. That would make 2024 the third year. And I think we potentially could discuss expanding that and having someone look at our compensation plan with the intent of, do we add more grades? Do we add more steps? Do we, how do we address the future? Especially if the exempt salary gets pushed up like we've talked about, which would eliminate most of our exempt positions, um, based on salary. So I think it'd be the, 2024 might be the time to take a global look at the whole structure. But even then, I can't, I just can't imagine that we'd add enough grades to deal with some of these highly competitive, highly skilled positions.
So have you looked at other, I know there's not many counties that have it. How are they doing it? Are they doing it by contract or are they doing it by casual employee?
I have no idea.
Is that something we can find out? Because the, making them a casual employee at that contracted rate, and then you look at the benefits and everything else, we're going to have to factor that all in.
But they, they only get DRS. They don't get other benefits. So they don't get medical vacation, heat holidays. They don't get any of that stuff. Um, and my understanding is there's increased scrutiny about what a contract employee looks like because this individual will be working in our office space, using our office supplies, using our medical records. That makes them an employee, not so much a contractor. Um, so it's just definition and ensuring that we don't get into trouble down the road. I know that's already happened in public health in the past, so we're all very aware of what that looks like. And it was not cheap.
So it'll be, it'll be in essence, a casual employee with a contract and a resolution body.
Yeah. So in public health, I have a nurse practitioner that's a casual employee whose rate is set by the commissioners. So we, we already have that precedent in my other department.
There won't be any contract. There won't be a contract.
It's resolution. Yes, thank you. So, good.
I'm amazed that we found someone.
That, that's why I'm trying to get them squared away because trying to recruit for this position, I, I would spend years and a lot of money. So I, I'd like to get them. They loved it here. They loved being involved and being able to help at the jail and they, 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 they want to be here, so.
Are we sure they're okay if they actually enjoyed being in the jail?
Well, there's that. It's not the most fun place. Um.
They don't have burnout yet, which is a good thing.
Correct. Um, so I do have a couple of contracts that you're going to see, uh, probably next week. So we have a contract with Relia's. Continuing education is excessively expensive in behavioral health. There's a lot they have to do. This gives us a platform at what I would pay for one person or one or two people, just if I went out and got the classes and I paid for it. But that will cover all of the employees. So even though it's, I, I can't remember the cost, I think it's like $3,000 to $5,000. That's cheaper for me than it is to buy the individual classes for all of the staff. So, um, that will be on the, that will be on the agenda for next week. Um, Chris is going to redo, go ahead.
I was going to say, you will never have me having a problem with training or cost of training.
Yeah.
You might.
Don't say never. In two years.
I don't see it. No, I don't see it. It's that important.
No, I agree. And, and I mean, it's, it's required for licenses, it's required for, so it's, it's, uh, it was an easy thing for me to decide to do, so. Chris's contract is, is up in June. He's agreed to an additional six weeks, so, uh, six months, I'm sorry. Please like sign it in the gold ink, I mean, which is whatever, just if we lose him.
I can do it.
No, it's, I, I can't, not without, we can't, we can't, we can't do without him. Additionally, the crisis responders, we've been doing their contracts on six month periods because that is our, uh, our contract with Beacon is six months at a time. So we're contracting six months at a time. So the designated crisis responders, at some point before the end of the month, you'll get those all as well. So that's just to do July to December because we don't anticipate that we're not going to get the grant for that, so.
What's our current cash burn per month on our crisis side is about 80,000?
Uh, probably somewhere in there. Depends on the month. It's hard, it, that's a hard, I need to probably look at that. It's a hard question to answer because we're buying things like, we're not just looking at, my bills are including buying pencils and computers and desks. So the current burn rate's not really gonna.
I'm assuming your finance person is keeping a very close tabs on your, tell you whether you're spending a little higher, you have a little reserve or.
I am the finance person.
You are the person doing it, huh? And the director and the.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think they're doing a great job. Just saying.
Well, I would like to give them a day off next Saturday and Sunday.
That's very generous. I haven't done that for a while. Um.
I would just say though, that like when you think about that, it's $80,000 burn rate a month.
Ish.
Ish, for an average of, you know, 20 crisis contacts. That's $4,000 per contact. That's the cost of crisis services when you start looking at that throughout a month.
Yeah.
It's expensive. Um, and so then just, I know I gave you some statistics, but also wanted to let you know that we're averaging, our current average for crisis calls is about four per week. They, they thought the average, just once you look at how much time it takes the response, follow-up, that's typically 12 to 18 hours per call. So, um, they're definitely putting their time in. Um, and then just wanted to circle back around to just with the EMS and that I felt like we really didn't get that resolved. I know they took an additional call, so they've now taken two out of 18 transports. Um, and just that, that, that's still on our radar. That's still a challenge and how, and how we're going to manage that moving forward. And I think Leslie actually from the hospital, um, was going to call in too. And she, uh, she and I had a really good conversation last week about some other additional challenges that they've had with the ambulance. Um, and is she there? Okay. I don't know. She wanted to.
Well, we do invite her.
Just say anything real quick.
Leslie, do you want to say anything real quick?
Oh, yeah, just to reiterate, I wasn't at the, the last meeting, but, um, you know, interfacility transfers, transferring of mental health patients who have a medical component is a challenge. And, um, you know, it, it is a need. There's, as Erin mentioned, the numbers aren't high, but, um, it, it, it takes up staff time, law enforcement time, but it also, remember, we, we might have a patient in the ED sitting for two days who needs to go to a mental health facility. And, you know, at the end of the day, keeping the patient in mind that that's why that trans, that transport's so important. We can't find anyone else to transport them. We try AMR, we try other agencies. But, um, you know, when we can't find someone, then we're, we're sitting with a patient and, um, it's just, you know, when they're ready to go to, to a facility and we have an accepting facility, it's, it's really, timing is really, is really important for, for everyone. But really the patient, um, putting them at the top of the, you know, what's important. So just, you know, hoping that we can continue to have that conversation with EMS to try to get those, uh, those transports, um, done. So I appreciate the commissioners bringing this up and, and meeting with the EMS staff.
Thank you. Yes, I'm hopeful that, uh, EMS will have a, a good discussion in their next meeting and, come back with, uh, something. And I'll just leave it at that.
I appreciate that.
Um, and then last, I just had this letter. So we, um, we're working through some quality assurance. Um, there, there's a lot of requirements as a behavioral health agency. Um, and this is, I just need a signature. I can leave it with Lee. Uh, but this is a letter of privilege. So all of the staff that are privileged as designated crisis responders, um, we do have to have a document that you have appointed them as privileged. Um, we went through a pretty robust, um, chart reviews, weekly supervision, um, job shadowing to get ma- to make sure that everyone was meeting the same standards before they were finally privileged. So this privilege is all but one of our DCRs who are still onboarding. So, um, I do need this signed in back so I can maybe just leave it with Lee or you can sign it.
Legal review on that one?
Legal review?
Was there? Or should there be?
No. This just says that you are agreeing that they're fit for duty, which I am saying they're fit for duty. Okay. Do you want me to write you a resolution instead of this? Okay, I'll send it to you. Okay. That's all I have.
I got no questions.
Where are we? Um, we have Director of Mental Health. Are there any applicants? Are there any other ideas for recruiting?
Um, Chris and I are gonna, are working on the meeting with a recruiter, um, hopefully at the end of this week. Or I'm going to be at a self-help conference next week, so maybe two weeks out, but looking at working with some recruiters to.
Like pet hunters?
Yes. Yep, they're specific to behavioral health. Um, my current focus is we need, um, I hate saying this out loud. I, I need the manager first. I need a second or a third DCR first. And then we'll, we'll put the, the director last, which is not, I mean, that's, that's what we need. Like, that's what we need to move forward. That's what we need to continue the momentum we have. Uh, we had Lacey was, uh, the manager, um, for the last four months, she made a huge impact. Um, she worked a ton and made absolutely no impact on my workload, which is not a reflection of her. I think I've said that before. Um, so having that person, um, is just absolutely paramount. And she will be stepping out of that role June 30th, so.
Is that the one that opened her own practice here?
It is, yeah. So that's my, I, I don't know what I'm going to do when she's not there, so. A lot of work.
Well, if there's any way we can help you facilitate any of that, please let us know.
I will. Did you all want to be the director? I have a job.
Do you really think I'm qualified?
I'm not.
Managed mental health. I'm probably more qualified to be laying on a couch.
No, anyway, so yeah, we just, we have to, I think the manager is my priority because I see, um, as much as I want out of this, which I think everyone understands, I, I, the need is greater there.
Well, keep your mental health good as you do it.
Yes, I'm working on it.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
Nope.
No, no, continue on with your mission of greatness.
Thank you.
All right, um, any topics for our discussion before lunch?
No, I'm good. You entertain a motion?
Um.
We have Director King on there. I think he, it would be good if he did an update on the EMSD and the hospital contracts.
If Director King has an update, that's fine. I don't know that the board, has that board met, EMS district met yet? Okay. All right, if he's got something for us, go ahead. If you don't, then just let us know you don't. Your calls are.
Yes, the EMS district board met last Wednesday afternoon. If I can look at my calendar to make sure I'm not misspeaking. Yes, last Wednesday afternoon, the 31st, EMS district board met. And, excuse me, let me get you over on my primary screen. If you're looking for an update specifically to the behavioral health interfacility transfers, correct?
Yep.
Yeah. So the discussion, there was much discussion around that and an update to the other board members that weren't present at your meeting. They have tasked their chief of operations, I should say we, I'm on that board by position, tasked the chief of operations to take a look at the existing interfacility transfer policy and what updates can be made to that to provide for, um, the processes and procedures needed to go through for behavioral health interfacility transfers.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. Continued updates on that meeting outside of that subject, if you would.
Sure.
Unless you have a question specific to that subject.
Nope.
Yes, so, um, it was also, um, announced at that meeting that both Skyline and KVH hospitals have notified the district that they're terminating their leases for their stations, the MS district ambulance stations at both hospitals. And I want to re-enter into a new agreement for the lease of those stations, in which the monthly lease rate would go from $500 a month to $2,000 a month plus utilities. And also, um, director on the board, uh, CEO of KVH, Leslie Hubert, announced a resignation from the EMS district board as the hospital's representative, and they did not nominate another representative to be on the EMS district board from either hospital, which they would usually make some recommendation to the board. And then, um, that leaves the board with only three members at this time because they already had a current vacancy, so. There are three voting directors of the EMS district board at this time instead of five.
So one is KVH. What's the other opening?
I'm not sure who that position represents. It's not the cities. I'd have to look. I can't speak out of turn.
Okay. So the two hospitals are going to have to get together to, to decide on the replacement. Leslie, correct?
Uh, after reviewing the, um, bylaws of the EMS district, I recommended that they go to their legal counsel to make sure. That's been past practice. But who actually recommends, um, that representative? Had some questions upon reading the bylaws during that meeting. So yeah, either the EMS district board can take input from the hospitals and make that recommendation to you for approval. Um, that's the way I read it, but they're in that process.
Jeff, do you, do you know how much more money the EMS district is going to get this year? Because I believe the EMS district is one of the few districts, um, that are not on the budget-based method. They get their money just based on a straight amount of money per thousand of assessed value.
There was no discussion of that during the finance section of the meeting.
Okay. When you have a chance to chat with them, could you try to find that out?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Might need a phone call to the treasurer. He might have the answers better. Okay, that was my only question.
Any other questions?
No.
I'm cruising through the bylaws and it looks like one position is recommended by the hospitals and one is recommended by the cities, and then three at large.
Yeah.
My quick, quick take on the bylaw, don't quote that, I just. My quick, quick take on the bylaw, don't quote that, I just cruise through them in three seconds, so.
And that's my recollection as well. The, the one position that was already open was, uh, at-large. Then the one that Leslie vacated was from the hospitals.
And, and the, one of the other individuals is from the cities? You're sure?
That's correct, yeah. Uh, currently, uh, Tony Gilmer, um, sits, is on the board and represents the cities.
Okay, so that's technically us then for that other open position, as the at-large.
Well, they're all, the way the, the bylaws are written, is the EMS board makes a recommendation to us.
Right.
Who it is.
Correct. Okay.
So.
All right.
Yep, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, with that, um, I would make a motion to adjourn for lunch.
And I'll second.
Yeah, we have a motion to second to adjourn for lunch. Any discussion about that? Uh, other than I would say good workshop and thank everybody for their updates this morning. With that, uh, all those in favor of adjourning for lunch, say aye.
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 Motion passes. We'll be back at one o'clock. Thank you for everyone who listened in this morning. All right, it is one o'clock. We will start our regular meeting, the Kikati County Board of Commissioners, uh, for the business meeting. Uh, the attendance, Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Christopher, our president of the room, and Commissioner Anderson is on her way. Uh, sorry, Zoller is on her way, thank you. With that, we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Commissioner Mike on two.
Thank you for that reminder.
Um, one comment on business agenda. I would, uh, appreciate it if, uh, on the consent agenda, if we can pull item number eight, which is the bill probation, uh, organizational chart update and do that one separately so that I can understand.
Got it. Uh, okay, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, um, to approve the business agenda with the change of consent agenda item number eight being added under new business.
And I'll second.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second to approve the business agenda with one change. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the business agenda with the one change, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 23rd, 2023 as presented.
And I'll second.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 23rd, 2023. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the meeting minutes from May 23rd, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, that brings us to citizen comment. This is a time where citizens have, uh, the opportunity to speak to the Board of Commissioners. Uh, that time is limited to three minutes and one occurrence. So if you do not use all of your time, you do not get to use it back later. Um, this is, you can, uh, address the board on anything that pertains to Clickatack County. Uh, it can be a gripe, it can be something good you saw. Uh, and we will open it up in the room first for a quickie. If you, anybody in the room have citizen comment, or would we like to wait? We'll wait. Okay, uh, we'll go online. Anybody online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners? Please unmute yourself, uh, or raise your hand. I did forget to mention that before you speak, please give your name and general location in the county for the record. So we'll do that. If anybody online have a citizen comment for us today? Like my tie on the video. That's Goldendale purple, sir.
Yeah, that's what I mean. But it's definitely a different color there than I'm looking at right here.
Is it?
Yeah.
It's, I think it's shinier for the light.
Mm-hmm. I'm not gonna talk about your forehead.
Yeah, it's shinier in the light too. I was outside without sunglasses coming. Oh my God, I wish I had hair. That's squinting so bad you can't see. Uh, anybody have citizen comments? You no longer get any of my citizen comments. All right, I'm going to provide my own citizen comment. This picture is of the, uh, Golden Dale Community Cleanup that we just had this Saturday. These are some of the volunteers that, uh, donated their time and vehicles, um, to the, our first ever, uh, Golden Dale Community Cleanup. We ended up having four volunteers working at the transfer station just to help people unload trash. People that weren't with our group, just to try to get the turnaround really good at the transfer station. Kept the lines really short. Uh, we had one crew with a couple of vehicles and trailers working with our senior services volunteer coordinator, who was out targeting, um, some senior homes, um, for people that have some issues letting go of stuff. Um, that group in itself, uh, managed to get 52 yards held out, uh, just from three senior homes, 52 yards. Uh, in total, we managed to get about 260 yards cleaned up from the county, from the city. Uh, all in all, it was a great success and I, it, the, the partnership with Republic that you can see there was very phenomenal in here. And I would also like to thank all of the volunteers that came out and helped us for the day. It was, it was nice to spend the day with people that, um, have such a passion for giving back to their community. And so, that was a good thing that happened. I wanted to bring that up and give them all their kudos because they deserve it from all of us. Negative, no good thing comes unpunished. I did manage to somehow drive through somebody spraying white paint. So my car has now white spray over sprayed all over the black paint, so I gotta go buy a detail and hopefully get that off. But all in all, good things. Any other citizen comment online for the Board of Commissioners today?
Where was your reflective vest there, sir?
Uh, was regular. Nobody wants citizen comment today, huh?
Too pretty outside.
Gotta be somebody.
Too pretty outside.
All right.
She's coming. What you got for us, ma'am?
Well, Kathy Moco, Goldendale, you stole my thing.
Did I?
Yes. I was going, I'm going to start with saying there are all kinds of good things going on in the county this weekend, including Spring Fest and a picking festival at a Coney Park for four days. And, uh, farmers markets and all kinds of things. But I was going to commend you on your Golden Dale Cleanup. And I spoke with one of my friends, is one of the heads of, uh, Republic Services. And the event went well. He said Republic Services gave 350 yards of free garbage on Saturday. And, uh, there were no lines and nobody was griping that, um, they had to wait in line too long. So I was going to commend you on your Golden Dale Cleanup Day.
Thank you. It was, um, I was very nervous. There was a lot of pressure because apparently they did this years ago. And the line from the transfer station was backed up all the way to the stoplight in downtown. Um, so it was very important to, uh, make sure trash got dumped very quickly.
Yeah.
And get that line turnaround done so it can be seen as a good thing and not a pain for the locals, so.
I think in the past, there was no involvement, county involvement, uh, help-wise. People were, if you had a Golden Dale address, you could take a free load to the dump was about. That was how it used to work.
That was how, that was the, yep.
Yeah, so this is way, you were, you were way more involved with all these people and, uh, that sounds like it went really well.
Figure Services Volunteer Coordinator did a really good job and I have to commend, um, Lynn with Clickatack County Solid Waste, uh, for helping me do the brochures and get the word out and, um, so Solid Waste was actively involved as well.
So, um, if anybody just went to the dump that day, did they, they get free?
Yep.
So every, every, so 250 or two-
No, 350.
Three fifty.
They said 350 yards.
Went through the transfer station that year. Lot of yards, sir.
So luckily for us, they, they facilitated my plan. We had volunteer tags on the front dash and then at the back window, we had somebody directing traffic at the beginning so we could, the volunteers could bypass the line and swing around the back. Um, so we didn't have to wait very long, but then we still had the volunteers unloading their trucks. So the hostilities, there were none. People were a little upset to see people cutting, but then they realized the line's moving so fast. It's not that big a deal. And then when you get there, you don't even have to unload your own.
Wow.
Maggot juice will do it for you. And there was a little friendly competition on who found the worst can and I was ahead on that one until the end and then somebody found one worse than me.
Anyway, it was a good thing. Thank you.
Hopefully we do it again next year and, uh, can advertise a little better and get it bigger and, and even more volunteers. Uh, but thank you for your comments, ma'am. They're appreciated. Any other citizen comment out there for the Board of Commissioners today? Online, just unmute yourself or raise your hand. We still have 21 minutes. I'm seeing nobody out there that wants citizen comment today. Yeah, speaking of doing everything on the same day, it's, yes, I think this litter pickup needs to be a little earlier in the year next year and not on the days we're fighting for volunteers because the, uh, pool was taking down their top also. So they needed a big batch of volunteers. And we all know it's pretty much the same faces that do all the volunteering. So if we're not fighting for them, it, it get things done. And then I missed, uh, White Salmon Spring Fest. They have a Filipino noodle guy that's just fantastic. And I love eating his food. So that was my big regret in missing the White Salmon Spring Fest. Still in citizen comment. Anybody out there has citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners or for my seatmates have anything they want to talk about over the past week that they saw or did in the communities?
I actually attended the Southwest Washington Aging and Disability Group in Vancouver on Friday, which is one of my favorite, favorite groups. They, they do a great job and it's five counties. Um, and once again, I have to come back and be proud of our county and thank Sharon Carter and her crew. Um, we have the most organized and offer the most services for a county out of Skamania, Clark, Wakayama and Cowalts. Sharon is awesome. They're awesome at what they do. There was a question last week about what mental health services there are when we're developing our mental health system for seniors. And so I asked that group what they knew and they said, uh, like everything else, it's lacking, especially for isolation. Uh, but there was a phone service that had been developed that seniors could call into. And so I started to ask questions and, uh, Sharon had beat me to it. She'd already asked for connection and how can we set that up here and model it here? So I have to thank Sharon for, for contacting the Southwest Washington Agency about mental health for seniors too.
We are very lucky in this county and our seniors are very lucky that we managed to have Sharon and can keep Sharon.
Yeah, and our county's really dedicated itself to be hands-on for our seniors. Um, other counties, they don't provide meal service. They'll spend the money and hire like Meals on Wheels or somewhere else. But we have, uh, yesterday I did visit the Pioneer Center too and it was awesome to see. It was Senior Lunch Day on Mondays and Wednesdays. And there was a guy getting his fiddle out of his car to go in with the seniors. So they provide music and, uh, they have a pool table and a lot of things in the senior center there. And they were in there having a good time, getting ready for lunch.
Yeah, they seem to always be playing pool in there. Couple of guys, same guys, yeah.
Do a lot of practice. I don't wanna play with them.
As I said, I almost thought about playing with them and then I'm like, no, that immerses me in it. Thank you for that update. Uh, anybody online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Anything related to Clickatack County or things happening in Clickatack County? Uh, online, just raise your hand or unmute yourself. I see 7211 is unmuted themselves.
Greg Wagner with C. Will all three commissioners make comments at the upcoming June ninth FSEC meeting that's this Friday? I'd like to know why isn't the county's prosecuting attorney, Mr. Cannell, actively representing the county and the citizens in this FSEC Carriage or Solar Certification Process? And I believe the only way that this board can protect the safety, health and welfare of the citizens of Clickatack County is to ban large-scale solar development within the county. I'd like to know, last week, Mr. Hunter said that Avangrid owes the county $35,000. And I just wonder why the board Bluebird Project, $35,000. Citizens have to pay their bills before they can get a permit to build a, a project. So I wonder why this corporation's allowed to have a franchise agreement when they don't pay their bills. And I attended the, uh, Planning Commission's meeting the other, other night for the solar ordinances and it was zoomed and recorded. And I just wonder why there's enough data storage to zoom and record Planning Commission meetings when they're, when we hear from the commissioners, there's not enough data storage for Thursday workshops. I'd like to see those zoomed and recorded so people can see what's going on during those Thursday workshops. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Wagner.
We had like six questions, so.
I have no idea what that was. Jerry, go ahead. Your hand is up.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm sure it's a beautiful view from Goldendale. I, I, it's just a beautiful place to look out at the mountains and I, and I hope it remains that way with our beautiful agricultural land. And that someday, we don't allow this beautiful seat of our county that so many people want to move to, you know, they'd love to be residents here. And I think that, I hope we don't turn it into a solar dump site. Let's just finish that thought up. And, you know, I had a question about our economic development for our county. It seems that our county wants to grow grapes and sell renew, or try to get, try to get as much tax money as it can from renewable energy. As we know, grapes don't employ a whole lot of people. Yeah, there are some people who come annually and help with the grape crops, but not a lot. Also, renewable energy's not giving any jobs to anybody here locally. So my question is, does our county have an economic development committee? Does our county have an economical plan? I've seen one, I believe it was from 16 or 17. And, you know, where, where is our county going with economic development to provide jobs for the people who live here? To give them opportunity? jobs for the people who live here, to give them opportunity? There's young people that would love to live here and participate in a growing fostering community with young children, but they don't have jobs. So where, where is our county going with jobs? You know, can we get a manufacturing place in here? What can we do that can actually provide jobs for the people who reside here so they can make a living wage, so they can participate in a healthy way in our community without having to receive social services, that they can have pride in providing their family a, at home from the jobs that they work and not from government handouts? So I'm really interested in our county's economic development because it just seems like we don't have a whole lot on the table right now. And with the Director of Economic Development retiring, maybe this is times for our county to reboot. Maybe we can get somebody in here that can really decide a future forward that serves the people of Clickatack County that put back into our county, we put back into our county, the people do. Solar panels don't shop. Solar panels don't do a lot of things that we do. We support each other. And on my last few seconds, I would also like to thank Ms. Carter with the Senior Services. What she does is absolutely amazing and it goes beyond. And I'm so happy that we can retain her in our county and we should be giving back to the people who gave us everything to raise us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buske. Does anybody else online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Pat Arnold, go ahead.
Hi. Couple of weekends ago, Friends of the White Salmon River and Columbia Gorge Community Action Network held a conference at the Discovery Center about climate change and effects and mitigations here in the Columbia Gorge area. And I wanted to bring to your attention, they were not speakers, but they did have a table, Columbia River Intertribal Fish Commission. And they have a, this is a brief summary document that I picked up of their river basin. I would like to recommend it to you. It's really excellent and it takes into account the need for renewables, but how you do that without causing additional harm, has a very clear statement. I'm sure it's a little long document. The book that I picked up is very, it's a very short summary. But there are a number of recommendations about improving river configuration operations, the Columbia River Treaty, reducing peak loads, maximize energy efficiency. And my participation in planning for this conference really made me focus on climate change issues in the way that I have not done. And I think that we'll probably have some kind of follow-up at some point in the next year or two. And we're going to post the speakers' slideshows on the Friends of the White Salmon website. Some of them are really, really excellent. Those speaker on changes in water delivery, how water storage on the glaciers is going to change, and really excellent speaker. So we'll post those on the Friends of the White Salmon website. Some people could look at them. But one of the things that kind of emerged as a theme was the need to produce renewables for local consumption. And in Hood River, they have a goal of 50% of their energy consumed in Hood River County to be produced locally by 2030, 2035. There are a lot of obstacles to doing that. Financial problems is certainly one of them. But I would really, there's so much talk about renewables in this county, but it's all renewables. They're going someplace else. It's not renewables that are being used here, meeting our energy needs. I'd like to recommend this thick energy vision to you. And perhaps we can have some discussion about this ongoing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Just so I can have it on the record, what would you, what did you say the name of that book was from the Intertribal Fish Commission? Your cellphone broke up.
It's Energy Vision for the Columbia River Basin. And as I say, what I have is a summary that I picked up from their table at the conference. I'm sure online, there's a way longer version of this, but the short one's fine for me because it has the highlights. Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. I just wanted to make sure we have that on the record for the notes and we knew what you were talking about. All right. Still in citizen comment, anybody else online have citizen comment for more commissioners? Please raise your hand or unmute yourself. I'm seeing none. Let's do a last call for citizen comments. Anybody online or in the room have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Okay, seeing none still. Do either of my seatmates have any comments that they would like to make?
I do. Would you like me to go first? For Mr. Wagner, yes, on comments for the FSEC hearing. I'm still formulating where I want to go with that personally. And I can say, personally, I do have a problem with extensions for some and not extensions for other. Fair Process and Open Public Meeting Act, I'm beyond concerned of how the process has opened up. And the citizens in the county have pretty much been slighted where I don't know how it's happening, that more time and more consideration is being given to the applicant. So I have to answer those questions for myself before I formulate what I can say under comments for that meeting. And Sherry, economic development, we are, I think we're on the same page with you. This is a change. Mr. McClure has left. We're going to be replacing that position. And we've been having those talks about how do we develop those two departments, the economic development and the natural resources. Those are going to be full-blown efforts and bring them forward into new departments with a, not that Mr. McClure didn't do a wonderful job, but times are changing and we need to move forward. And this is our chance to open those up and do some new things, maybe. And Pat, thank you so much for attending that and for commenting to us, too. There are so many things to attend and so many things we'd like to attend. And our days just get gobbled up and run away. So thank you for also making sure that those speakers are posted online. I'll be sure and go to Friends of the White Salmon and watch those speakers when I have a chance in an evening sometime. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
I'm still responding on what I'm going to say. If you want to go first.
Okay. I guess I'll respond to Greg first of why isn't the county collecting the money it's owed from the green energy person? They will, sir. We will. It's not an issue. It will get paid. It's, there's no reason to make a mountain out of a molehill. Your question and why isn't the prosecutor present at the FSEC meetings? Again, I can't control the prosecutor. That's a question for him. You should direct that question to him. And then about our workshops on Thursday, our workshops on Thursday, which we have about one a month, are open to the public for anybody that wants to attend. Sherry, I agree with you that because of the recent retirement in the Economic Development Department, we now have a chance to reboot. I'm hoping for a reboot, not only in the Economic Development Department, but on the case PETA board as well. We will see as that goes. And yes, the economic development plan for this area is solar panels and grapes. I testified on that when I was running for office three years ago and nobody was listening. That is a 10-year economic development plan, and I hope to be sitting here when that comes up for renewal in 2027, because I will make sure that this area has something more than solar panels and grapes in the economic development plan. Pat, thank you for attending that. I do, I don't check often, but I do go check the Friends of the White Salmon and watch some of your video stuff that you have posted. It helps me keep up to date without, like Lori said, you get so busy, you can't sit through a two-hour meeting sometime. So it's nice to be able to go watch things on Zoom. So we do appreciate you posting those. We do actually watch them. That's all I have. Mr. Anderson?
Sure. Mr. Wagner, I do not plan on being there on this Friday. That is an applicant, an ask for an extension. Extensions happen regularly with regards to applications, especially after you have a hearing. It gives the applicant time to review all of the comments and make any potential changes that may need to be made to address the concerns that are brought up. So I don't see a problem with the extension. And I don't see why the FSEC board would deny that. In terms of the PA, again, thank you Commissioner Christopher pointing out that the prosecuting attorney makes his own decisions. And I'm sure you have emailed him and asked him why he's not attending. With regards to Avengrid and the $35,000, we do not finalize permits until all the fees have been paid, whether it's your road construction permit or whether it's your building permit. That is normal. And as you know, we've updated our, the way we do things. So now we bill by the hour. So we can't just send you a bill until we've finished doing all the work. And so that's, that's a part of what has been created from your comments over the past two years. Sherry, with regards to this beautiful county and the Economic Development Strategic Plan, the county has a 10-year economic development strategic plan. It took years to formulate that. It was put together with a committee of all county residents who worked for years on that development plan. We continue every year to update that Economic Development Strategic Plan with the appendixes. You can go on the county website and look at those. When you ask about the county creating economic development, I like to remind people that we're in the job of government. We allow for the development, but we are not in the job of competing with the private sector. And so many of the things that we're asked to do is actually to compete with the private sector. In many instances, we put and we spend our money on either innovation and workforce development. That's what Richard does a lot. But a lot of what we do is pumps and pipes. We put things in the ground so that somebody else can come in and build those manufacturing facilities. Without the county's involvement and the money that we put in there, there would be no economic development for new jobs. What we do is we lay the foundations so that other people can come and build what the community is asking for. And I would say that Clickatack County has done an amazing job over the last 30 years of putting in those pumps and pipes and leveling the ground and doing things that help the port districts in the areas around Goldendale so that they can thrive and people can build when they want to and they need, and we have available spaces for that to happen. With regards to Ms. Arnold and the Friends of the White Salmon, if you have a link, could you please send that to us? If you find that on that Energy Vision for the Columbia Basin, and I would just like to apologize, I would hope to attend the meeting at the Discovery Center, but I had other things come up that Sunday. So I'm sorry, or Saturday. And with that, I will yield back the rest of my time, Chair.
Okay, that is the end of citizen comment. We will move on. Thank you all for showing and commenting. And thank you all for showing up to listen to comments. We will move on to public hearings, public meetings, and bid openings. Before today, we have the bid opening for a white plastic line edge CRP 368. The contract provides for the improvement of 1.58 miles of Bickleton Highway, 4.56 miles of Centerville Highway, 5.66 miles of Clickotin Appleton Road, and 6.36 miles of Pine Forest Road by installation of extruded ferroplastic line and other work for all in the accordance with contract plans, contract provisions, and standard specifications.
Okay.
I roped myself into reading that whole thing.
Good job. We have the white plastic edge line CRP 368, engineer's estimate of $210,000. We have three bidders. The first one is specialized pavement marking. And they are from Tuolatin, Oregon.
Engineer's estimate, by the way, is 210,000 according to my sheet.
Didn't I just say that?
I think so, but I didn't remember. Did he say?
Somebody else can remember. You're fine.
I didn't think he said it, which is why I said it. But we don't say it then.
End of number one, sheet seven. All right. End of number. Number one on the blank lines. One has been authorized bid bond. Three bid bond is present. Total bid. $191,963.70. Oh, hold on. That's Schedule B. Never mind. Schedule A, Schedule B, Schedule C, Schedule D, total Schedule D. Total contract, never mind. Please present what I said. Total contract schedules A through D is $390,327.55. I knew that. I was just too excited on that one. Next up, we have Hick Striping and Curbing LLC. And they are from Brooks, Oregon. Oh, one has been acknowledged. The bond is here. Total contract amount is $240,967.70. Wow. That is a swing. Next up, we have Stripe Right Incorporated from Kinnawick, Washington. Addendum is acknowledged. Bid bond is present. Contract amount is $323,481.90.
Wow. Wasn't expecting that.
With that, Mr. Chair, I would move that we take these bids and we remand them back to Public Works for a review and recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion to remand and review. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to remand these back to Public Works for a review and recommendation of the board. Any discussion on that? Hearing done. All those in favor of returning these back to Public Works for review and recommendation, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen. Next up. Actually make you read it, but I'll go ahead.
Well, thank you.
Next up, we have a bid opening for slope flattening and/or guard rail CRP 370. This contract provides for the improvement of Proud Lake Highway and Pine Forest Road by fat flattening of four slopes, or if it's not feedable. Uh, or if it's not feedable, installing guard rails and other work, all in accordance with contract plans, contract provisions and standard specifications.
With this, uh, slope flattening and, and/or guard rail CRP 370 has an engineer's estimate of $280,000. We have one bidder and that is Frank Gurney Incorporated um, out of Spokane. They didn't want me getting into this. You cut your knife on here? Thank you. Addendum number one has been acknowledged. Bid bond is present. Sheet two. Total bid, base bid and alternate number one A. So you want it with the alternate?
Yeah, you can just read uh.
Okay, I didn't know if you wanted it and then the alternate.
Is there, there should just be a total at the end, right?
Yeah, that's. Well, there's the base bid and then there's the, oh, that's a different one. The total bid is 337,826 dollars. Ooh. With that, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to uh, remand this bid back to the Public Works Department for a review and a recommendation.
And I'll second.
And to find the money.
Alrighty, we have a motion in a second to remand this back to Public Works for review and recommendation. Any discussion on that? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, kind sirs. Go forward and do great work and find more money. I don't know.
So expensive.
I was expecting bids to start coming down at the end of the COVID supply chain issues, but they're all still up there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is consent.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with seven items noting that item number eight has been pulled and added to new business.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the business agenda with seven items.
The consent agenda.
Uh, sorry, consent agenda with seven items. All those, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Um, payments, do we have payments? I didn't see payments. Uh, vouchers, regular agenda.
Is it in the box?
Red folder.
I have a red folder. Orange, green and blue. Oh, it's over there. It got passed on to you guys? I have regular agenda voucher and agenda over there. We don't have a payment sub here.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we have before us uh, a matter of revising the adult probation's organizational chart to reflect updating the litter crew supervisor to a to- to a 1.0 FTE. And increasing the hours of work. Uh, my motion is to approve this uh, resolution.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve. Uh, any discussion? Um, I will note that I am abstaining because of my relationship with the position holder. Um, so I will not be voting. Um, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
And I am abstaining, motion passes. Thank you for doing that separately.
Of course.
We can probably move on to public provision meeting. No?
Be here. I know I put it in staff.
So I just have, I have orange and green. He's got blue. Nobody's getting paid. Sorry, all employees, you don't get paid this week. Well, we won't go home until we find it anyway.
Does that technically mean she's taking the money with her?
She just took all the payroll and left and she just walked out.
Or another way to put it, she took all the staff to lunch with her.
Yeah. She did. She took all the, the staff's paycheck to lunch with her.
That's a red folder right there.
There was a red folder over there. It just doesn't.
Have anything in it?
Obviously have the bills in it or we'd already seen.
You take all the staff to lunch.
You, you get credit for the missing folder?
I do. I get credit for the missing folder.
So we need to do payment vouchers?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve accounts payable warrants in the amount of 188,242 dollars and 78 cents. For the date ending June 5th, 2023.
I will second the motion.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second to pay the bills, which doesn't seem large enough to be employee pages in there, but.
Uh, there were payable warrants, but there was no payroll.
Got it, okay. Uh, motion in a second to approve the bills. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
What's next?
They'll still be there.
I know, I got two more. I'll lose my spot.
And I apologize for taking those.
It happens. It doesn't. Nobody's ever done it before, but it happened.
At least I found them.
At least they didn't go to my office.
Uh, you already signed, I think. So we'll put those back over here. Um, alrighty. Oh, when she even printed me a copy, I brought it up on my little thingy here, but that's, you got it here. Works for me. Um, with that, I will recess the Clickatack County Board of Commissioners meeting. Uh, and call for an opening of the meeting of the Clickatack County uh, Public Corporation. Um, the corporation at this time is going to advise that we need to appoint Alisa Grumbles to serve as secretary for the corporation. Uh, and noting to the public that this is a non-voting position. Uh, for anybody that uh, wants to know what's going on, Ms. Lee is retiring, so we need a new person that manages uh, the secretarial for this board. Um, with that, we need a motion uh, to make the said change, if I have one.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I would make a motion to appoint Alisa as the secretary for the Clickatack County Public Corporation.
And I will second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to make the change of, of secretary. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of making the change and appointing Alisa Grumbles to serve as secretary for the corporation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, at this time, I'll call for a treasurer's report.
Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, the treasurer's report ending April 2023 was 121,100, excuse me, 121,123 dollars and 37 cents.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adopt the uh, treasurer's report.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion to accept the treasurer's report. Um, motion in a second, any discussion on that?
Yeah, um, do we know, have we asked the, we, we did ask the treasurer?
We have too low of a balance to get a better rate.
But do, do, do we get any rate on that?
We do. I think we get about 1%.
But uh, huh, okay, as long as we asked. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, with that, any further discussion? Uh, we have a motion in a second to accept treasurer's report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the treasurer's report, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, with that, is there any further business to be conducted um, by the public corporation? Uh, hearing none, I would entertain a motion um, to adjourn the public corporation.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn the public corporation meeting.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to adjourn the public corporation meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjourning the public corporation meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, at this time, I will reconvene the meeting of the Clickatack County Board of Commissioners and move on to our business agenda. Uh, next up is HR manager Casey Sheridan with a sheriff's office uh, reorganization.
Hi.
Hello.
So the sheriff's office, um, I know there have been, we have discussed in the past, um, a little reorganization of their department. So, um, ideally what they are um, proposing is to, it's not an increase in FTEs, but they're looking at a little different restructure. Of um, removing the chief civil clerk and um, bringing in the uh, chief civil deputy. And then putting the chief civil deputy over the criminal records technician and the civil clerk. And so it is a structure that they have had in the past. Um, and then they have removed the chief civil deputy. Um, when the undersheriff position was reinstated. And so now they're looking at removing the chief civil clerk. And then uh, replacing that with the chief civil deputy and then giving that position the supervisor, supervisor duties over the chief criminal. Um, criminal records technician and the civil clerk, excuse me, so.
Budgetary impacts, what is one of them pay grade and what is the other one's?
So the chief civil clerk is currently a exempt position on the pay grade, uh, grade 69. And the chief civil deputy is going to be the same as the chief jail deputy. It's one of the appointed positions that the sheriff is allowed per the RCWs. And so it would be at a set rate and it would be the same as the chief civil deputy. And that rate would be um, 4527 per hour. And so just wages, there would be a, a wage difference this year of $27,000. But they do have that within their budget to cover the changes. So, so there's no.
Is that for the rest of the year or is that for the whole year?
That's for the whole year.
Okay.
Um, because.
7,000 is the whole year.
Okay, yes. So the current um, wages that were budgeted for 2023 was a little over $62,000. And the proposed changes would be a little over $90,000. And they are also requesting that this go back to January 1st of 2023 because Karen has been doing all of the duties um, regarding the budget. Um, the posse and then the supervisor duties over those two positions. And so we're looking at uh, doing that restructure with an effective date of January 1st. And then there also was a little change in some of the job descriptions as far as removing um, the duties for their records duties from the. Sorry, I want to make sure I get the positions correct. So removing those duties as far as the records duties. From the chief jail deputy and moving those over to the chief civil deputy. So Lauren would still be uh, obviously over the jail and the corporals and the sergeant.
So clarification question, we wouldn't have a budget impact this year because they have the funding or the, is there going to be a budget ask next year for more money to cover said changes? Yes, there will be an add-on? I'm gonna take that as a yes. There will be a $27,000 ask for more money next year.
Is, is that just wages or is that wages and benefits?
Just wages.
So what is the total cost of wages and benefits? Do you have that?
Uh, Karen, do you wanna, you wanna come up and help me with that then?
So under the admin um, bars number, it has an impact of $35,709. Total, and that money will come from uh. The patrol bars number 52122. Is where we'll take that money because we've got access in there from the positions that have not been filled that I've been covering for.
Right. I say my worry is not that you don't have the money in there this year. It's where we're going to get the money next year. So that, that was the question. Okay.
And how many uh, employees is that supervisory over?
Two. It would be over the criminal records technician and the civil deputy as far as the org chart is concerned. But then she would have um, the supervisor duties over the posse as well. And managing all of that.
Right, because she manages all of the posse. She organizes all of the things. She goes to all the events, all the posse meetings. And on top of that, she's also doing all the new marine patrol stuff so we can make sure that our marine division is meeting the requirements of the. Of the um, contract there. So her duties are. Over and beyond what she's been paid for the last three years. This woman has put in. 70, 80 hours a week and not been getting any overtime or anything during that timeframe. And I don't think we realize, I don't think we realized at the time when she was put into that position. That it was not still the chief civil deputy, you know, because that's the way it used to be. I think that we just assumed that that's what it was. And um, so. We were enlightened recently, so.
Do that change take place?
Um, so the chief civil deputy. Was back in 2013 and 2015 and then it changed and got reassigned to the chief civil clerk. Um, and the posse duties, I think, were removed from some of that. And then it was the sheriff with the chief criminal deputy looking over patrol and then the chief civil deputy that was looking over the jail. And then they renamed that. And so he had the four appointed positions. And it went down to two and now we're going to go back to three.
Um, questions, comments? Opinions?
So why did it go from four to two in the first place? Was it budget constraints or what was it?
Um, I am not in 2013. I, I don't have the answer on that one. Um. I, I, I think the change in elected officials was the main reason during that year. Because previous, there was an undersheriffed and then that was removed. And so.
I was trying to sugarcoat the answer a little better than that, but you did a good job.
I was sugarcoated.
It was pretty sugarcoated.
Politically correct. Yeah.
Questions, comments, opinions?
So, so the, the understanding is, is that next year, this difference of thirty-five thousand will be built into the patrol, patrol side?
Into the admin side, we're taking the money from patrol.
So, for this year, you're going to take it from patrol in order to backfill it. Next year, you're going to put it on the admin, so admin will go up.
Right, because we put the money from patrol years ago to, from the chief civil deputy.
The chief criminal deputy. So, the chief criminal deputy position was under patrol, and then that wasn't filled. And so the idea was the funding from that position would cover the others.
That's what we've been doing.
But have we been budgeting for those?
Yes. Yeah, we've been budgeting for that chief criminal deputy, that's what we've been using as our...
The excess in our...
Overtime.
Overtime.
I'm tired of that.
We always have, that's why we have so much overtime. And so we're taking some of that back and putting it back in admin.
Well then, if we're using that right now for overtime, where are we going to get the difference of?
We're not, we haven't been using all of it for overtime.
So you haven't been using as much overtime? Because you're fully staffed?
I'm tactically losing one, but I have one to replace, so.
But you're amazingly enough fully staffed.
Yeah, we're one of the very few agencies in the state, so yeah, we're pretty lucky.
Okay.
We'll move forward with getting the resolution drafted and submitting for the consent agenda then with the changes in the job descriptions and the org chart. Good with that.
And do we usually look back to the beginning of the year?
Sometimes if people are doing the duties and it was discussed previously, then, then those are all factored into the decision.
So, discussed previously with the board, or discussed previously with the elected, or what do you mean?
With the board, with the board. Okay. Thank you.
Weird, weird day, isn't it?
I just feel like I'm...
Run.
That would be way scary. Thank you.
And no, we were not possessed by aliens, so. That's questionable. Actually, no, I have not. Um, alrighty. Next, we have a notice to advertise and resolution to schedule a public hearing on June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, at one-thirty PM in the commissioner's chambers, room two-hundred, Clickatuck County Services Building, at one-fifteen West Court Street in Goldendale. In relation to the sixth addendum to the agreement regarding solid waste handling between Clickatuck County and Republic Services, Inc. I'm assuming that's a yes, we're going to go advertise for a public hearing. We need a motion on that, or are we just going to do it? Okay. I was, didn't hear anything, so I was making sure before. Before I got a motion. Okay. Up to you, if you think there needs to be a motion for a hearing. Let's do it just to make sure it's clean.
Yeah, I mean...
Make a motion for a hearing.
Because we've already sent it to the newspaper, right?
Yep, yep. Let's just make sure we cover our bases and do it, it doesn't hurt to do it. We'll make a motion, accept, approve, whatever we do, and then we know it's clean, so I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we move forward with advertising a public hearing for June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, at one-thirty PM in the commissioners' chambers relating to the sixth addendum to the agreement regarding the solid waste handling between Clickatuck County and Republic Services.
And I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the reservation, scheduling the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Moving on, unless somebody has unfinished business or any other board pending before we call Mr. HR manager up. I mean, we kind of covered a lot of board pending already with off-topic stuff, but if there's anything else before we have HR and executive, now is a good time to do it.
I can give an update, we held the public house open town hall for the Hood River Bridge replacement. There were roughly a hundred and fifty people who showed up at the Library in White Salmon. There have been five hundred comments online from the open public house so far. There was, the bit, the, the goal of it was for the Porta Hood River to get public comment on option A or option B for the toll. The overwhelming majority, of course, is always going to choose the one that lowers the, or that limits the increase for the locals, because those are the people that are voting. And so, right now, the overwhelming majority is stating that the new toll would be a dollar seventy-five for Breezeby users, and then three dollars and fifty cents for cash. The other option B was two dollars for Breezeby, and then three dollars for cash, so only a dollar difference.
But they want to punish the cash people and make them pay more than the Breezeby people.
The cash already pay a dollar difference, so one of them was to keep that dollar difference and just add a dollar, because all the increase is going to go into an account held by the new bystanders.
I understand, so Breezeby would go up seventy-five cents and cash would go up a dollar seventy-five.
A dollar fifty.
They said it would go to three seventy-five.
Maybe go to three fifty.
That's unfortunate. How many people commented that Porta Hood River shouldn't be raising tolls until they decided to use all the toll money on the bridge instead of...
That comment was made by multiple people.
Very lucky it wasn't made by me. I'm trying to behave myself on this issue.
I'm pretty sure I've said it too many a times.
I don't know, yeah, well, I think we all think it, it's just...
Oh, no, it's, it's been said many a times, but that's why in life sometimes you negotiate, and the negotiated agreement was to, that it would be two thousand and twenty-six before they would be fully off, and they would be ramping down between now and then. It was to not make a huge impact on the organization, they originally wanted two thousand and twenty-eight.
Sucks to be them, they shouldn't have been doing it from the start.
Well, as I like to remind people who bring that up, I, I ask them, people who use the bridge regularly, well, do you go to the, the park, and do you take your kids to the park?
No.
Yes. And so, the answer is, well, you are getting some of the benefit from that. Have you ever been to Solstice or Camp Eighteen-O-Five or anything else that was built down there? Do you work down there?
No.
Do you have a Breezeby since now, or this is...
I, I do just now have a Breezeby, but since I have to get my window replaced, I'm sure they're going to charge me another five bucks for a new one to stick out in the window.
Will you afford it?
I don't know.
I'm thankful you got it down to two thousand and twenty-six.
Yes.
Yeah, better than two thousand and twenty-eight. We said unfortunately, I think there might be some big money, fed and state, that are not interested until two thousand and twenty-six, and they know all the money's going in the right spot. I don't know if that's already been an issue, but that's what I'm hearing from the ones I talk to. Yeah, no good information. Nothing bad against us, it's just Porta Hood River. Anything else for board pending? Okay, hearing none, so HR director Rod Van Cleve in accordance with RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero prime one prime G to review the performance discipline or qualifications of a public employee. Do you have anything in open session, sir, or are you going to need just all executive?
Executive.
Okay, are we going to be making any decisions afterwards?
Possibly.
Possibly, okay. We'll be, I'm going to ask my seatmates, will we, will be, will we be returning to Zoom for any decisions we make after executive, or are we just going to keep the Zoom closed, make a recommendation, and if somebody wants to know what it is, they can call and ask? Because it's executives, I want to close this.
Yeah, we're going to close Zoom, I don't think we need to create a new recording for just a two-minute, and it's a May. But we will definitely note it next week if there was one on the Zoom for the record.
Can I, would you take offense to me explaining to the public what we're having a Zoom about? So, we are currently hiring for a new economic development director, and we are going to go over applications, that's essentially what we're going to do. So the action might be who we want to schedule for a interview, that's going to be the action. So I don't know why we have to come back on a Zoom. So with that, we will just go into executive session. For how long?
Start with fifteen minutes, I think. Mr. Chair, the decision I was thinking about was a discussion about afterwards about the day-to-day operations of the department, I don't know if that'll take a motion or consensus short-term.
Right, got it.
So, that's all I was, I don't think we'd come out and talk about the interviews at this point publicly. So that's what I was thinking about, was the day-to-day.
Yeah, I, we're not going to Zoom, so if somebody wants it, they can hang out here and they'll get it later. With that, we are going to go into executive session for fifteen minutes with accordance to the RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero prime one prime G, and thank everybody online for their attendance, and we will see you back again next week.